Yeah.
We'll call the April fourth, twenty twenty four, Prairie Grove Planning Commission meeting ordered. First order of business will be approval of the March fourteenth minutes you have before you.
I move we approve your minutes for March fourteenth.
Have a motion and second to approve minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To the same side. Motion is approved. Uh, request for conditional use in an R three zone requested by lots one oh two holdings LLC. To fellowship Bible church of Northwest Arkansas for land located on Heritage Parkway. Parcel eight oh five, two oh three, two eight, eight hundred and eight oh five, two one, seven nine six.
Is everybody clear where this land is?
Well, I thought it was, but your picture has me a little confused.
Okay, straight across from what I call the engineering institute or urban cable company. It's the land across that, uh, Tom Sims was gonna build condominiums on at one point. He is selling it too.
So it's not up behind like Washington or across Washington water? That was where the original address pinned.
No.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Scoot it back to where our design origin is, we're making about that. And then you have like the feed store and the truck.
Yeah, I get where this is.
It's about twelve acres and then there's an additional parcel that's got about an acre, right?
Yeah, that's secondary access.
So it's about thirteen acres total.
Yeah, because that's just a corner of the main parcel.
And I believe they do have representation here tonight if you want a brief explanation of what they're planning.
Sure.
Yeah, so my engineer, your cat, uh, John Marquette, I'm with the church. Um, and, uh, it's our desire to, uh, purchase this property and, uh, build a, build a campus out here.
And you've already got a campus in Fayetteville?
We have one in Fayetteville, one in Rogers and one in Bidville. Yeah, so love to answer any questions you all may have.
How large of a campus are you looking at?
So this is probably, uh, we're anticipating, uh, probably around the sixty thousand square feet. Uh, Fayetteville is about ninety or about ninety. So this would be a little bit smaller. At least that's the plan right now. Be about four to six hundred seats.
That's gonna be my next question. Your occupancy load? That's what you'd expect, about four hundred worth of service?
And their engineer is ESI at Springfield.
Just gonna have the one access? Is that all it?
No, there's, um, there would be two access points. Uh, there's this main drive. And if you travel north a little bit, there's another parcel where it kind of wedges out. Included, I don't know what, seven feet, eighty feet wide or something like that.
Yeah, if, if you remember that property out there, there's three old houses that have been moved in. It's like the third house, uh, is connected to the property.
Yeah.
I understand churches can go in any zoning, correct?
By conditional.
Yes, this in the future zoning is commercial?
Uh, yes. Most of it, I don't know. I didn't look to see how far back that zone went, but frontage definitely would be. And there they talked, when they talked to us, you talked about possibly leaving the frontages commercial anyway. Is that correct? Or have you given any thought of that?
Yeah, we had, we've had some thoughts. The, the piece that's right adjacent to the north of that driveway is where the wedge starts. We've had some thoughts if it might be worth our while to invest in that piece as well. Um, it free up, uh, sidelines and, and, and visibility to the church.
The highway department have any problem with access, even though I mean it, that other piece of property?
Of course, that will, won't know probably until they get into large scale.
They'll request. I just didn't know first.
Tell that department that any access from Loudwood Department, so.
There would just be the expansion of existing access, right? Cause there isn't access on both of those parcels.
Yes.
It would just be expanding that.
The new driveway would have to be permitted through the highway department, part of.
Those are anything.
Really, really, the only thing you're talking about tonight is whether or not it's an appropriate location for a church, so.
What, um, here, here's why. If he said they're still considering leaving the commercial in front. If they decide they don't want to leave commercials, right? Are we losing a bunch of commercial space for businesses that we? That we have in our planning have said that we're using heritage as businesses for tax dollars and commercial property. But we, I mean, I hate to sound bad, but isn't that why we did the planning the way we did?
That's definitely a discussion point and I'm, when you looked at the large scale with Mr. Sims for his condominiums, that was something that came up during that meeting and he left the frontage as commercial.
I agree with you because it's kind of even like our, our storage units. That, that's one of the things like they were commercial up front, stored in the back, right? Like a mullet, it would be a lot better than all stored right up front. And so I think it looks better and I think, you know, it would serve the purpose of the bypass better. This is a little different area than developing all the new out here. But at the same time, it's still, like you said, it's, cause like the church is tax exempt. So there'll be, I don't think there's anything that will go to the schools, right? Off the access value.
It'd be totally exempt.
And there'll be no sales tax to go. So I mean, and in reality, it does take a viable commercial lot. Away, but at the same time, what does it add to the community? I think that would be the other side of it to look at both sides. You know, uh, what the churches do provide typically for the town, uh, you know, is good also. So there's, there's both. There's kind of that catch twenty-two. Uh, losing some, some prime, I mean, it's prime real estate.
Well, from saying what it brings to the community, you think the biggest thing that church contributes to the community is after the service, everybody leaves and goes and eats. Where it's at, I don't know that I see guys coming from church, turning out and going to Prairie Grove to eat. It could be actually the exact opposite because most of the people already have a Fayetteville campus, so.
It'd just be the new.
Right.
New, new members from further down the road go there and eat back in town.
Well, I mean, we, uh, we anticipate, uh, there would be people from Farmington that would come back this direction.
Yeah.
Uh, I doubt we'll see a lot of, uh, people from Fayetteville coming clear out, uh, from the Fayetteville campus. Um, but we, we anticipate just with the new growth, this will be a lot of, uh, South Farmington, Prairie Grove, Lincoln.
And you've already got some Prairie Grove members because I've already talked to a few.
Yeah.
Oh, that's it, yeah.
Certainly, my daughter said that exact thing. She's like, that would be a lot closer for me.
Yeah. And the rooftop you guys have on, on the pipeline, I mean, that's where our anticipation is.
I'm kind of sure with leaving the front commercial, just because it makes sense when you have condominiums or something already like that to have commercial, but having previously worked at a church and kids coming and going all the time. I don't know that having commercial up front in the front parking lot, essentially basically of a high-traffic church is a smart idea in the way of safety. Via traffic. But I'm with y'all. We've made a big think about commercial frontage and how many acres is this up front? Thir- I mean, I know you said thirteen, but.
Generally not a two. Correct. One of them is twelve and the other one is.
One point eight.
One.
Yeah.
But if I remember, and I'm trying to pull this up on my phone right now, if I remember right, it's an odd shape. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Thirteen point five and one point eight.
This is the additional piece that.
Yeah, okay.
What we've had, Tom Sims do is.
It's interesting the, when they don't. Getting both of those.
Kind of aligned.
Well, I think they're probably, my assumption would be. You gotta open that visibility because the way that lays.
Yes.
I mean, if they built here's the parking lot, I mean, it'd be real visible.
So need be.
Well, this piece right here is part of the, is part of the.
It'd be hard. I mean.
And then I think.
Commercial space and that, but I don't see they want to leave any commercial in front of that. And they could.
Two access points.
The owner did that. Then put it there.
It's just not part of those, just aren't children owned by law.
We know that's made paper coming in.
They're looking for a chance to sell it.
Oh, I know. You're not, you're pretty sure.
I'm not against God.
Well, at one point.
You could do some commercial over here. No, no.
Yeah.
This is more central to this property.
What I remember is Tom left that.
Another guy too is, you know, if you drove up and looked at their facilities in Bentonville or Lowell or Fayetteville.
Okay.
They're really nice looking facilities. You know, it's not like where some people build and say, you gotta have this and you gotta have this. Patrons saying, we don't like that builder. We don't like this style. If you go look at those three churches, I mean, I would say they're, they're, they're aesthetically pleasing to where they're located at. You know, that's not trying to blow smoke to them. I mean, I just, I've always noticed them driving up the interstate. I've always noticed the grounds. It looks like a golf course on the Lowell one or you guys call it the Rogers campus, I think. Uh, and then the one on four, on one twelve, it's back a ways. So it's not as easily seen, but when you do drive back there, you know, it's, you can tell, of course, there's that big empty pay lot right beside them, but swamp. What's coming?
You gotta have something across the road. Well, they can't get financing.
Oh.
Yeah, and then, uh, there's right behind that front hayfield to the west is a developer right now is, uh, multi, uh, townhomes, multi-story townhomes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't dispute they'd be great, great addition. It's just a matter of, I mean, are we willing to compromise and give up that commercial?
Well, I'm thinking that too, you know, just the feeling. Sometimes you get another industrial building. That's what I was thinking. Like, that's one of the things that we have that I don't like always, you know? You drive a mole and you see industrial building after industrial building, flex space after flex space, you know? But even the flex spaces now are finally starting to look a little nicer.
Well, what, uh, what Tom had proposed back when we did the large scale was that little area that fronts the highway there. I think he brought his driveway right down the middle of it and had committed a commercial lot on either side of the driveway.
That's where are y'all planning? Like, there'd be an entrance and then do you know where you're planning on putting the church?
Well, right now it's, it's probably more along this line in here.
Okay.
Uh, if we did proceed with that lot with the CUP invited that lot, we'd probably bring it a little closer forward.
Sure.
Um, reorient it to the road.
But we're parking to the rear side back behind.
Yeah, some sides, a little bit of parking behind first, staff apartment and stuff, and that's not a great pattern.
Yeah, this property really doesn't have a lot of public.
Now, they got that extra lot there in between the two parks. That would really open that up. Now that is, then it's a lot more commercial space though. That's the negative of it. It's nicer looking if you didn't have that little house right there in the middle of your church. But if it did, you know, you're taking up more commercial space than what we were, was actually promoted.
That entrance will stay, right? They'll just expand it. They won't move the.
That's what we would have explained, of course.
That driveway there?
Yes.
I mean, there's.
Like that would remain here.
When.
These have.
If it's this way or this way, I, I don't really know. But I mean, main driveway, I would.
I was saying, they own that as well.
I'm sorry.
Which is.
This lot.
Well, and this is.
Larry.
You know.
We've already met with their engineers and pointed out.
There's not.
It's on the other side of.
Maybe clarify with me, maybe I'm looking at it. Cause I just, just now noticed, but we're talking this, this sliver?
Well, so this, now this is the one that is came in the original purchase.
It would be this one that we would consider taking a look at.
Okay.
We haven't even reached out to the owner and.
Okay, okay.
Asked, but.
But as of right now, I mean, it would have, you'd have that gap and. That makes a lot more sense.
And we, honestly, if it makes more sense if with that piece, then even move the driveway to align better or something across. I mean, that could open that up as well.
It'd be nice to know if they had access to that, you know, and the plans and everything which other engineers wanted, but maybe.
We haven't got the backstory. We just completed year worth of revamping our.
I did hear that.
So I mean, that's where, I think that's where the tear is, is trying to decide if, uh, you know, we want to go against what we just just put in in play or I guess fix it.
Well, that's, I won't speak for anyone other than myself, but the actual church and the property is that I have no problem with that. It's giving, I think, giving a however much land and commercial space on the highway frontage that is causing us to pause.
Oh, that's my, that's my own.
Yeah.
It's not the truth.
It's not the truth at all.
Bring more people closer to God. Absolutely, I'm all for it. However, as you said, there's, this place is growing and growing, so that's where you're expecting your, your congregation to come from as this place grows. By saying that, this place is growing and growing and we're giving up commercial real estate that go for our schools and our city that we really need. And, and, and I'm not just all about the money, but that's why we left it commercial. I mean, for our year-long, year-and-a-half-long revamp, everything. And, and so that's where I'm, that's where I'm at.
And then note, the flip side of it is that could bring in some other commercial alongside of it, knowing that there's going to be patrons there, four to five hundred at least twice a week and multiple other times where, you know, they're not like a food place in between.
Prairie Grove, Farmington, college.
You know, like they're not like in between Prairie Grove, Farmington, because those aren't your major centers right now. And that kind of like could meld maybe some of that area, because you look in that area, car lot, uh, you know, industrial facility. There's not a there's a strip mall there, the newer strip mall, but there's not a Washington Water Industrial to go to shop. So I mean, what do we have in between the two towns? It's more of a like a you know what I'm saying? Like you've got, I feel like once you get over the river, you have a focus of businesses there downtown. Once you're in Farmington, the main strip, you have a focus. There really lacks in between the two. Would that entice anybody to be there? I don't know, but it is bringing more people. It's not just a travel by then. It's a destination on a Sunday or a Wednesday or other times during the week. Which they used to have a Saturday night service up at Rogers July.
Still doing Rogers.
And so that was a big draw, I know, especially a lot of the college kids that don't like Sunday mornings.
And the Walmart folks. Work Saturdays.
That would be the other thought, just trying to think of both sides and.
Well, I mean, it's a conditional use, so we can request that they leave a certain amount for commercial frontage, right?
You, you can approve it with conditions.
Yeah.
Well, and right now we're not asking for the, that one wedge-shaped piece.
Right, over there, right.
Which has been the point of the discussion. It's only this. Cause like the twelve acres, what he's saying is pretty much, there would just be an inlet. It's not really a ton of commercial. They don't have the primary, prime, commercial all bought and part of, I think is what he was saying more so there. You know, that one piece and then the in-between, he's saying that's more your prime commercial and that's not even purchased yet. But if they did a primary secondary access on that other one, then it is taking up some of the commercial unless it provided space. Is there enough room right there for a drive and some type of commercial? On that secondary space, not the, not the main parcel, not the twelve acres, but the, the other parcel where the house is.
Not much there.
I'd say depending on placement, yes.
You get these two lots.
They run it down the property line. There were these three lots here.
I think this is the one or two of the drive and then this, so there's, of the four, five lots, you know, you'd have four remaining that would still.
I mean, you could put like a Hampton Inn on the acre, so, or less than that, so.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's plenty wide. It's a hundred and hundred and forty-five-ish wide, so you'd still have over a hundred foot of frontage even if you can run in there or driveway.
And then it goes back to, do you want the commercial businesses between the church and the road? And like she was saying, working out of church, that is a negative.
I think they could be separated. That's, I mean, I know like on their, in their Lowell campus, that Casey's or whatever sits basically in the corner parking lot, right?
Especially.
No, it's across the street.
It's across the street.
Yeah, especially on that secondary lot, I think you could leave it commercial and there'd still be enough room for an access drive there. Uh, may not be as attractive on the frontage, what little bit of frontage they have to put commercial, but.
But it would be nice like that spot right there to have a nice entrance with your sidelines to your place. I mean, gotta be able to see it. You don't have to be able to see it. It'd be nice to be able to see it.
Especially if it's a beautiful facility, you won't see it.
Right. It's just if you opened up all of it to see it and then didn't have any of the commercial there.
Well, and moving with that addition of that lot, moving it forward, also raise, raise the overall, uh, finished floor plan a little more viable to the highway as well. Cause that drop, that lot drops off pretty well towards the back.
I'll say for me, then y'all can do your own deal. I would be fine splitting if one commercial or one parcel stayed commercial and he left his main entrance not, but with the understanding that if you purchase any additional lots on that, I would have a really hard time giving those up to not be commercial space. So I think if you're trying to buy those for view of the facility, we're gonna probably want a commercial business to go there. So I don't know if that would help you or not.
Well, I mean, who knows?
And I could deal, I could piggyback off of that saying, right now you could almost do the two separate entrances and keep them just for the church with almost no residential, but if you buy in between, go ahead and take what you did have down here, put it down here, have that be your view space and make sure the rest of it's commercial. So kind of like what she's saying. But just I could almost allow whatever that road frontage there kind of come down here a little bit and make your bigger view one spot. But past that, start going commercials.
So the, the second, so let me ask you this question, because a lot of the, lots in this family is want a secondary access for fire. Would that be the case here?
I think with that many, that big a building, I think, well.
Cause I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that maybe, uh, that secondary drive, we could leave commercial if we obtain that front piece. Um, but that may not give us space for a second drive.
Measuring on my phone is not real easy, but it looks like it's about a hundred and forty-five feet wide. So if you have a thirty-foot ingress and egress access, you'd still have a hundred and fifteen foot of frontage with that secondary lot. And I think there'd be plenty of room on.
To current one or two lot?
Do what?
That current one or two holdings lot?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it's about a hundred and forty-five feet wide.
Yeah, and what that does too is it opens up commercial a little deeper, maybe oriented different.
Yeah, it would end up being a hundred and fifteen foot wide, but fairly deep lot.
Yeah, and that's not always good. I mean, we've seen like the place where the big hog is, the big bronze hog, that's one of those deep lots where access, I think it hurts the businesses a little bit.
Visibility.
Yeah, but you would open that up. I mean, uh, uh, certain businesses would probably thrive in that location. I mean, I, I'm I'm definitely for as long as it's not more than just like a, a nice area to get in, you know? So you want to be, you want to be visible. You've got to have some road frontage. If you need to see what, how much they end up acquiring and what the overall plan is, like, I feel like we're kind of, there's almost too many speculations, like, do we get the proper and do we not? That makes a big difference.
That's, I think we take all that out of the equation and work right now of what they actually are trying to purchase. That's why I'm hesitant to say like, well, you can take those and then maybe in the future we'll do the rest commercial. Then I just never buy it, or that might never be for sale. So does anyone, I mean.
Would yours a motion?
I was about to say, I'm about to make a motion and let's see what else has anything. Okay, I make a motion that we approve the request for conditional use in an R three zone requested by lots one oh two holding LLC. Seller to fellowship Bible church of Northwest Arkansas for land located on Heritage Parkway, Waco parcel eight oh five, two oh three, two eight, eight hundred and eight oh five, two one, seven nine six, zero, zero, zero. With the condition that the lot, the secondary access is on remains commercial frontage.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So that would still allow us to set as a drive?
Yes, but just the other part of that property on that secondary spot.
And so this, this view would still be open?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For the church.
We're really only asking for, or I know she was asking for half, basically.
Right, really not even half, if it's a hundred and forty.
Half of the, a fourth, I guess.
Yeah.
So we're about to do a, you know.
You do your drive back and then.
Legitimate driveway.
Yes.
We would require a thirty-foot strip for ingress and egress, so that's, you can put it right down the property line.
Yeah.
And that would all, like, if they were to, this is against, if they were to purchase the other stuff and then come back with something different, right? That would be all new.
Be all new question, yeah.
And it would have more factual rather than just.
Speculation.
Yeah.
Everybody clear on the motions? Are you understanding what she's?
Yes, the, the second, the, the smaller lot stays commercial.
All right, any other discussion?
In other words, it doesn't get the CUP. The CUP doesn't apply to it currently.
Do you have to ask for something to get the drive?
Okay. I, I think we can deal with that with large scale.
Okay.
So if we're doing it that way, do we want to change your motion to exclude that lot? Or are you just talking the front?
Is that in effect yet?
There's two lots.
There's two lots.
Right. Is that already deemed commercial though, or is it still?
She said that's the remaining commercial in her motion.
Mm-hmm, okay.
She said the first lot.
Well, you said.
Approve the second lot, pass for me.
We're not changing zoning either way. We're just.
Yeah, just a conditional use, yes.
Yeah.
But yeah, we could remove that if it was already.
You know what parcels were? I think the first parcel is the big one.
The.
Small ones.
Twenty-one, seven, nine, six is the small.
So just make your motion relative to the big parcel.
The two oh three, two eight, eight hundred.
Okay, so just remove, like, we would add no condition to the motion. Okay, I make a motion that we approve the request for conditional use in an R three zone requested by lots one oh two holding LLC. Seller should, seller to fellowship Bible church of Northwest Arkansas for land located on Heritage Parkway, Waco parcel eight oh five, two oh three, two eight, eight hundred.
That's the big one.
Yes.
Yep.
Period.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hope to see you again. Best of luck.
Well, thank you.
Didn't need to be an engineer to help with that.
Yeah, don't pay him.
He'll still try to charge you though.
Yeah, but says naming a Prairie Grove.
Yes, out there to the left. Uh, and last meeting, we tabled, um, the approval of phase one and phase two of Copper Hill subdivision.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Sorry we weren't here. I did not have it on my calendar and when Larry called me, I'm like, so my apologies. I know your time is valuable, so. Uh, we'll go to cover everything tonight.
They, they were actually happy because it made for a short meeting, so I feel bad.
I know the feeling, I know the feeling. Uh, thank you. And yeah, we've submitted phase one to phase two and tailored with. Uh, thank you, and yeah, we've submitted phase one to phase two and Taylor with craft control engineer can certainly get into more details. Uh, because all of our utilities run through phase two, the off-site sewer connections, and so that's why we've submitted both phases together. We're gonna build phase one, uh, there's gonna be a lot of grading going on that will be outside of phase one. Phase one is where we're gonna focus on completing the infrastructure and utilities and paving.
Are you gonna do the, uh, grating for phase two while you're doing the grading for phase one, or you know?
Yeah, there's some kind of grading, yeah, we'll be outside, yes, outside, because of the detention ponds are. Located in different corners depending on where the water wants to be.
And that just, it just makes sense for a construction.
Yeah, uh, tough to budget a bit, but makes sense. Uh, and then I know there, there was a question on Butler Road earlier. We've always planned to widen and improve Butler Road along our frontage. And Taylor brought up a good point, which is with phase one, we only have a small section from Butler Road. And I guess the question to the city and to the commission is, do you want us to wait and improve the whole thing at one time, improve it as we go along? We're open to your thoughts on that. Uh, it's definitely better to do it at one time, um, so it may be. And because we're working counterclockwise, it also puts it at a later phase, so that's something to consider to where maybe we decide. After phase two, the whole thing's done or phase one, the whole thing, but something to discuss. Uh, another item was the park areas. I think there was a note about to be designed by others. All that really meant was. The, the specific features.
The amenities.
The amenities, whether it's benching, pavilions, uh, big toy swings, those types of things. We usually work with a third-party playground provider. And we'll have them kind of select some materials for us and then draw aside from for, so that's really just what that's referring to. And then I know Larry, you mentioned something about there used to be parking shown by one or both of the parks. And maybe it got pulled off on one of our plans.
It's, it's back on here, but I think the planning commission at the last meeting. Uh, suggested that maybe they do the same thing that they did here on this side as well. Yeah, just mirror that parking on the other side.
Yeah, we can do that. So, uh, beyond that, we're just, uh, happy to get rolling on this project and I, I know you may have lots of questions or. Additional, uh, conversation on what.
Is that the main, did I cover the main comments that we had from last month, everybody?
Well, fire away, we're here to answer anything you guys.
But we're gonna go all the way, how far down just to there?
That'll be affected by this first project is this right here, so that's his question. Uh, do we want him just to improve for those one, two, three, four, five lots? Or do we want to wait till they do this other work and do the whole thing at one time? I'm okay with waiting, just simply because it is such a small section, but y'all might have a different opinion. Only gonna be for two years, so that's not gonna cover phase seven, cause phase seven is gonna be further down the road.
Cause that would be, you know, usually what you would require, right?
In this case, it's gonna be beyond when, probably a long, yeah. I'm assuming you're not gonna do phase seven probably in the next two years already.
No, no.
And how far do we?
It's, there's this kind of halfway gravel. Um, so we, we don't have a right to that or any of that, improve that, it's all private.
So we'll do all Pittman with phase one then?
Right, we'll create a T at Pittman in Boston, basically.
Where is that fire lane? Show it to me.
So it would still have access to that T.
There is a lot of water that comes across here. And I'm not sure exactly what the plan is to deal with that. This property owner actually contacted me a couple of months ago. And when Mr. Coyle had built that, he had promised that there would be culverts actually under there and they're not. But this actually will fill up and go over and cascade over that driveway, which is, so it's gonna still end up on y'all.
Was that to get into our, our underground system?
They have a cop everybody.
Now, that fire access, does it attach to what Coyle's doing down there?
It's.
Does it show on Google Maps that it does, but I didn't think it did.
Well, it's not, it's just a gravel access.
But even in his plans, was it there?
Yeah, we, we've made him leave it open and they're gonna fireballer, ballard it, so they're gonna put up the collapsible ballards that you can drive over. So it's not gonna be open to the public, but a fire truck can go across it.
Okay, I started to say, I don't remember it in his plan, so.
Well, if staff, I mean, if, if staff is good with. Waiting on that, I mean, it makes sense.
City Council will have to weigh in on that as well, just an FYI, which I'll do Monday, uh, week for Monday. They, they actually have the final say on that.
How soon after phase one does phase two start, you think?
I think it'll be quick on phase two, because the plans will be approved in conjunction with one another, so they'll have all the permits in place, ready to roll on this.
So you'll probably have twenty twenty-four, you'll probably have phase one, and you'll probably run right into phase two on twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, we got a great utility contractor we're gonna put on this one, um, and so when he's done with utilities and the paper comes in, depending on what other job we have. He could swing right into two, starting utilities, so. Um, with it being a new community, you're just not sure what your volume's gonna be, um, we get it wrong sometimes.
But I think that was one of the discussions we had last, I mean, that we discussed phasing it to. Keep a huge influx of people, kids and schooling system.
Well, I do think this, even this will be spread out probably because of timing. You're not gonna have the first phase done until. Close to the end of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, it, I bet it'll, I think we're projecting delivering these in early twenty twenty-five is our expectation, so it'll be another.
A phase one.
Phase one, yeah.
Behind what they listed as their phasing plan.
So you're saying homes won't be available until twenty twenty-five?
For phase one. Phase two would be.
I mean, we'll project twenty twenty-six, I mean, you know, again.
So it's likely to fall in the next year, and that's what we were kind of worried about if they all got twenty twenty-five at one time. That's where we are fearing the influx. But if you knew that it was going to be the next year when phase two actually offered, that helps a little bit more.
Yeah, phase, phase one and phase two are kind of joined it, yeah.
Right, yeah, everything else will, you know, it just kind of depends, our engineers try to, you know, advise us what makes the most sense. Where are we moving dirt? Where are the utility connections, those types of things? Sometimes we'll design things together, sometimes we'll break them apart. But typically, we're gonna build one phase at a time.
How many lots?
It's a hundred eighty, one was eighty-one, one was seventy-nine, eighty-two and seventy-nine.
Delivering the first homes at the beginning of twenty twenty-five, delivering the whole phase, right? Like that, those homes will be sold throughout the entire year, most likely, probably.
Yeah, I would say.
Yeah, that place sold out before it was built.
You just never know, we've, we've had a, you know, real success in Springdale, uh, with a recent job and we're now behind because of it, but. You know, if you're selling six a month out of here, you've got about twelve months of supply.
Which I like what he said, I mean, twenty twenty-five is one, twenty twenty-six, that is phasing. Like we said, we said eighty per year, that was kind of the goal. That would keep more, cause like when they said they were gonna do them both together, that's approval. But we were thinking. And that's not quite what they're saying, so that's.
And we don't want to have that much.
First phase in twenty twenty-four anyway, so you're already kind of.
Yeah, we are beyond.
But that, that actually makes it more likable to what we were wanting. I don't, I don't think it's possible to feel the full burden of both of those phases until twenty twenty-six, like it just. Build out the entire one, you're talking towards the.
I don't know if Scott has a conversation with y'all or not, but they're already engineering their upgrade downstream. So that construction should be starting maybe by the end of this year.
Talking about the.
The upgrade will accommodate all this, yeah.
On, um, Mock Street?
Mock Street and Butler.
Yeah, mock up to Butler and over, okay.
Yeah, they're already engineered.
Wow, awesome. Yeah, that was one of those questions I needed to ask, but didn't really want to ask.
Is there any other questions that we can?
I think so, just clarify, we're gonna add additional parking right there for the park.
Was there anything here, or were we gonna, were we good with, how many spots?
I was gonna say, how many spots are the parking you already got projected?
Like you said, the park area have near the.
Well, and I know these are designed for neighborhood park use, but.
Yeah, cause you, a lot of people will go.
But those who might drive to come meet people there from other parts of the city, we want, we don't want the parking in the street.
And I thought this one would have the parking, one, there's a milky eye there, two, people are coming there like, hey, let's all meet up and play soccer. It's not just the kids live in this neighborhood.
Right, yeah, I'm sure.
Whatever league that are using that or whatever. There's gonna be some more. Now, this may be more. That should be six stalls.
What's this one here? We're like ten? That, that would make sense, like we were saying, that one could be more just strictly neighborhood, that one, I think. Might be more people come from other parts of the city and come visit, so it makes more sense to have more parking there. Just to keep them out of the streets. So yeah, if we do mirror it on the north side, that'd be good.
Do it.
I moved, we approved phase one, phase two of Copper Hill subdivision.
The second that.
Have a motion, a second to approve phase one and phase two perimeter plat- of Copper Hill subdivision. Any further discussion? And then all those in favor say aye? Oppose? All right, good, for our city council meeting in two weeks, right? Have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you all, again, apologies for missing.